Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our FY26 budget deliberations. Today's date is July 8, 2025. The time is 12:30 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll go into our first item, FY26 budget deliberations. It's an action item. And who would like to start?
I'll start, Brandy Falcone, for the record. So, taking a look at the preliminary summary. Currently, at a 3% tax increase, we now have a surplus of $202,000. And then, at a 2% tax increase, deficit of $417,000. And then, at a 1% tax increase, deficit of $1 million. A 0% tax increase, a deficit of $1.65 million. So, since our last meeting, there have been some changes that were made. So, first, I had several departments who sent me cuts to make to their budgets. So, IT, I cut $55,000 from their budget. Community development, $3,400. The prosecutor, we were able to reduce their personnel ask a little bit by prorating the request. Same with the assessor. Juvenile detention, we increased their revenues because they're changing the daily rate for the residents there. Sheriff's office had additional A-budget cuts of $400,000. AMP cut $1,500. The sheriff had additional B-budget cuts of $230,000. The TCA had $9,000 of cuts. And the treasurer had some B-budget cuts as well. And then, the clerk departments had, the auditor had $5,800 of cuts. Elections, $5,300. Recorder, $2,600. And so, the last meeting, we had discussed having departments and electeds prioritize their budget requests. And so, the electeds and departments that I received a response from was all the clerk departments, AMP, prosecutor, sheriff's office, and treasurer. Those are the responses I got for lists of prioritized budget requests.
And Brandy, can I just ask, when you talk about cutting, they're not cutting their budget, they're cutting their requests. Is that correct?
They're cutting their budget requests, yes. And then, I think the clerk had some stuff.
Yes, so yesterday, Brandy and I were just looking at, you know, B-budgets, not only in the clerk's division, but overall at the county. And I think we were looking at total, how many org sets total with the county?
Like 186.
Yeah, so it's quite a lot of budget org sets to look at. So, I think what we're going to ask, because I've talked to some other county clerks, particularly in Ada, kind of what they have to do when they're looking at trying to balance a budget, is that each elected official and department head really needs to go back, and I wrote this in my memo to you guys that I sent out earlier, and look at their actual spent budgets of 2023, 2024, and actual 2025, along with their adopted 2025 budget and what they're requesting for 2026. And I asked that they look at their, that B-budget. And what we're finding is, even when looking at my B-budgets too, we had, last year after leases were reclassed to capital, all departments within the county returned over $676,216 of unspent operating B-budgets funds back to fund balance. And so, if elected officials, department heads, look at that and actually budget what they think they're actually going to spend, that will get us to, if people's priority, like I said to you to the board, priority is those steps on the anniversary dates for the employees and then trying to focus on that COLA, we maybe can achieve that. But people really need to look at, A, do they need positions, new requests? And then, looking at their B-budget operating budget, what they actually need to budget and not just what they like, and looking at those trends over the last two to three years. So, I'm going to ask that each elected official do that. And then, at that point, eventually, the clerk's going to have to look at that too with Brandy. But that's a lot of organizational sets to look at over the next week to two weeks. So, if that is the goal of elected officials and department heads, to try to hone in on that COLA, that's what we're going to have to do to get there.
Any questions? I would like to add something to that, just to kind of put it into perspective. We have one account here with an elected that in 2023 used $132,000. In 2024, the actual amount was $125,000. In 2025, the actual amount so far is $39,000. But the request for this year is $250,000. It's a huge amount of money. And we have no historical basis to support that kind of money. And we may not for a little while. We have another one where I realize there were some multiple accounts being used, but the actual amount for FY25 is $360, but we're being asked for $140,000. There is no historical precedence to suggest that the account should be that much. And so, I would argue exactly what you're saying, which is, let's go with historicals. These aggregate numbers that you've presented, Brandy, do not include a COLA, do they?
Correct.
So, if we're going to talk about a COLA, then we have to talk about significantly cutting these asks that has, that have no historical reference to support them.
Correct. And there are some specific departments and elected officials that are on my radar, such as the ones you mentioned, that I want to reach out to them and just, you know, gently encourage them that they need to make these cuts because there is no historical basis. So, that's what I'll be working on the rest of this week. So, I was just going to go through the budget summaries and touch on some outstanding items. And also, we need to make some more cuts to A-budget. And so, in light of people's prioritized lists that we do have, I'd like to look at that.
There's just one more thing I wanted to add.
Okay, go ahead.
So, one thing, I think we all just need to work together. And one of the things, I think, as elected officials, we get nervous cutting maybe our B-budget because we're responsible, right, if we go over? And so, we have to work with the board. So, the board sets contingency money, which you levy every year. And so, in contingency, on Fund 10, our general fund, you guys levy for this year $250,000 for fiscal year '26. And then, for Justice Fund, Fund 15, you're levying $300,000 for contingency. So, every year, we levy a certain amount. And this year total, it's going to be, for those two accounts, funds, $550,000. So, as an elected official, if something does happen, we should be coming before the board saying, hey, you know, we're going to go over this line item or organization set for this operating fund. So, we're going to come before you and ask that to make us whole. So, that should be in the mindset of elected officials, not to necessarily, I don't want to say pad our budget, but that should be the mindset if we're trying to hone in and tighten our budget so we can get to that COLA. So, I just want to put that in the mindset of elected officials. If for some reason, something comes up, we didn't necessarily plan, we didn't know it was coming up, that we should be able to come before you and say, hey, this came up. And that is where that contingency money sometimes comes in play or the use of fund balance. So, just keep that in mind, not only for you guys, but elected officials, that we should be able to come before you and let you know that at that time.
And just out of curiosity, what do you think is a reasonable amount? Because no one, no one has a crystal ball to see into the future. But you have some historical data, some numbers that you can work with, right? Because, you know, right now, it's all spreadsheets. You know, you can change the numbers to whatever you want to make the spreadsheet, you know, to get the output or the outcome you want. But the reality is, we're going to have to pay for some of these expenses if they're not within the budget, if they exceed the budget. So, you have $100,000 one year, $105,000 another year. What would be a reasonable amount for a B-budget that you think? So, that way, it doesn't come in at $65,000 this year to make the numbers work. And then, it comes in, you know, the actual expense is $115,000. And then, we're forced to have to pay that. But the, the numbers were made to work this year so that the COLA could be had or other things.
I think for us, like, Brandy and I were looking at travel in the auditor's division. Is when you, is, I'm going to go into our New World Financial System. There's ability to do transactional detail in there. So, you're planning out each thing that you know next year you're planning out, right? And there's going to be unknowns, but like, we know, okay, travel. And we plan that out from basically the airline ticket to the seminar, professional cost. So, we're entering each transactional detail. So, that starts adding up the cost. Whether it's, hey, we know we need to replace two chairs, three chairs. You're not just putting a $2,000 office supply cost in just a very vague detail for chairs, office supplies. You're putting detailed information, transactional detail where it adds up, that you know that total where you're getting $5,000, where each total is going to that $5,000. If you can get to that level of detail when you're entering your budget, that allows you to know where you're really tracking detail. Now, if something comes up unknown, then you know at that point, I can go before the board and say, I just did not plan for this unexpected cost. But that takes a lot of planning upfront when you're entering your budget. But I say, that's really important when you're setting your budget, to go into that transactional detail. And then, you can go before the board and say, hey, this was just an unplanned cost. And you can actually present that to the board by that level of detail that you enter at that point.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not yet.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
One thing that I wanted to bring up was I got an email from Pusher Duncan about an increase to our FY26 ICrim premium. So, I have not entered that yet because I wanted the board to be aware.
And that's not our official notification. That was just kind of, I inquired because I knew something was happening. So, when, you know, the official notification will come through the right channels, but I just want you to be aware.
So, we're looking at probably a $65,000 increase to our ICrim premium for next year. So, that will be an additional expense that has to get added in. In addition, I was notified by IBALE, our independent audit firm, that next year's audit will likely be $8,500 higher than they had projected due to a variety of factors. They've had to increase their wages significantly for their staff, which doesn't surprise me. And then, they also, there has been a lot more work on the Cootney County audit in regards to the new accounting pronouncements for leases and for our ongoing construction projects than was anticipated. So, the board can choose to increase the budget by $8,500 or not, but either way, we likely will end up paying for it next year. And so, if the board's okay, I would like to go ahead and increase the budget for the audit next year.
Yeah, if we can predict it, we should put it in there.
Yeah.
And then, we'll be, Keith is going to be putting together an RFP next spring. And I've already made contacts with a few other firms. So, I have a feeling just the cost of getting an audit these days is just going up like everything else. So, but we'll be comparing different firms next year.
So, our 3%, at the 3% tax rate, the margin went from 202, 203,000 to about 126,000
Correct.
with those two additional expenses.
Correct. And it's just, you know,
And without a COLA.
Correct, without a COLA. It's just cost of doing business. I mean, we can't control insurance, really, so. All right, I'm going to go to the personnel summary. And I had a request from the board to change the numbering on the lines. So, this is the one that starts with 1A at the, at the first line. And at the top section is request for new positions. And so, I wanted to go back through this list. I think we probably still need to make some more cuts. One that I wanted to discuss was line 4A, the request from the assessor for a new residential appraiser 1. Currently, there is an open residential appraiser 1 position, and it's been open for over a year. And when we kicked off the budget, I did tell the board that when we look at requests for new FTEs, we have to evaluate that against current open positions. So, I wanted to bring that back to the board's attention and see if you were still wanting to approve that or if you wanted to have more discussion around that item.
Well, and I'll point out that I believe they also have a conversion on 40A. That's going to convert a position to residential appraiser. So, that's one open plus two new requests.
I think 40A is a residential appraisal tech, I believe, but.
Yeah, and then it says to convert to a residential appraiser.
Oh, correct. You're right. I'm sorry. Yes, so you're right. It would, that would add two more residential appraiser 1 positions in addition to the one they have open for over a year.
Did you want to add something, Sessor Kovacs?
Commissioners, I do admit that our request might have been a little bit confusing. We probably shouldn't have made it as confusing as we did, and I apologize for that. So, currently, we have an appraiser position that's vacant. It's the one that Brandy is referring to. We also have an appraisal tech position that's vacant. That was an appraiser position last year. We came to the board, we asked to downgrade it from an appraiser position to an appraisal tech. Both of those didn't get filled. I'll speak to that in a minute, why they didn't get filled. But we also presented to the board this year that our request is for five FTEs. So, our, our grand plan, as it were.
Five additional FTEs.
Five additional FTEs in addition to those two that I just spoke about. If we, the presentation that we gave to the board, the board asked for metrics. We provided metrics, metrics based off of the IAO standard, which is a national, international standard, partial count per work, per individual workload. We are seriously deficient in, in the employees. And we're at the point of where we need to make the decision right now in order to maintain and provide for the future. And I will remind the board that if we don't accomplish our job, then it impacts the revenues for the entire county. And so important is that, that the state legislature adopted 63-314 that basically says the commissioners shall provide, doesn't say may, says shall provide to the county assessor the resources that we need to do our job. And so, we've gone back and we've reevaluated. We definitely want to be a good neighbor and a good department to try and reduce our budget. There is no sandbagging in our budget. There is no fluff. And, and so, we have discovered, however, in the last few weeks, that our request for the DMV, we can work with that. And we're going to concede those requests and, and not ask for those. But we're, we are respectfully asking the board to reinstate our entire request. And so, let me clarify. What we should have done, instead of asking to reconvert the appraisal tech back to an appraiser, we should have just left that alone and came back as our, as our request for fiscal year '25 to ask for three new appraisers in addition to the one vacancy and to ask for one new appraisal tech in addition to the existing appraisal tech that we have. And so, that is what we need at a minimum in order to provide the work that we do and, and perform the assessment. Otherwise, you know, we're kind of at the point in time now, we're, we're, we're looking at a critical situation. We do have a presentation that we'd like to give to you because the board asked us to come back and provide more information. We have that. We're prepared to do that now. We would have to hook up, but I just offer that to you, Commissioner.
Any questions?
Yes. Did you get everything done on time for 2025, up to this point?
Get everything done on?
Your notice, your notices went out. You inspected the right amount of properties. You did everything you needed to do with the amount of appraisers that you have today.
So, so we accomplished our tasks, but there is always the question of, can we sharpen the pencil better? Our, my staff has related to me that there are, sooner or later, the deadline comes upon you. And whether you're ready or not, you're done. And we'd like to not be in that position. We'd like to, to not be in that position so that we can ensure that we're looking at every parcel, doing all the assessments, and that there's not a hint of question of, of.
But, but you got it done in 2025 to this point, missing a residential tech and a residential appraiser, having those two open positions.
Yes, and we did incur overtime in April to have people come in and work longer hours and work on weekends to, to get through that.
But Commissioners, respectfully, if you run any kind of a business or operation, you know that you've got to provide for the future. We have some information we'd like to present to you. We are losing institutional knowledge like every other organization is throughout the county. And if we don't provide for the ongoing training and support, you know, you've asked us many times in the past, what's the ratio? Is it twos to threes to how many? And if we're not providing for that future, we're not going to be able to sustain.
All right.
We absolutely need to build that pool of talent, that level of competency so that we can do our job and, and maintain the revenue for the entire county.
All right. Commissioner Eberlein, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, what's the cost of overtime?
We have that in the graph here. We don't have the exact dollar cost, but.
For 2025, year-to-date, it's about $6,000.
And what's the projection from, to 2026?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't know. If everything remained the same, you could expect it to be a little bit higher for our overtime.
How much higher?
Our overtime costs in '22 and '23 were equivalent to almost two FTEs. So.
So, it's kind of a waste of money.
Excuse me?
It's kind of a waste of money then to just have overtime.
Right. And plus, the story that hasn't been told yet is the great advances that we've made in, in modernizing and innovating and changing processes where we've actually, we can demonstrate where we've actually reduced that overtime.
I just have a question. You've had this appraiser position open for over a year. What would you say is the reason you've had difficulty filling it?
Yeah. So, the issue is, we have, with limited staffing and constant ongoing deadlines, we have staff that have to dedicate their time, essentially full-time, one-on-one, to shadow train and train the individual. Historically, we've looked for the, the better time of the year, which is typically about, about twice per calendar year, where we can hire and, and have our staff that train them have the dedicated time to do that. We're never going to have an opportunity, the ideal opportunity to do that. And so, what we have to do is change what we've been doing in the past so we don't keep getting what we've got.
Yeah.
And we, we're, we have to be all hands on deck. I've got commitment from my staff that we're going to have to do that and fill those positions. And, and we just have to do that to provide the training.
So, let me ask again, what do you think is the reason you haven't been able to hire somebody? I mean, you're running ads, right? You're interviewing people, right?
It's not that we haven't hired in those positions. That, that's more of a marker of the last time we were, you know, fully staffed and we had no vacancies. We've had, you know, appraiser 1s hired in the interim. It hasn't been a year. Most recent hiring was in February where we got somebody back, back on board. I would say the reason that it's so hard for us to train is, our organization right now is in a bit of a catch-22 where we have our senior appraisers who are having to do appraisal work to get us over that line. So, we see overtime, that's us sprinting to make the bar, the statutory bar. That's not going above and beyond. That's not doing additional studies. That's not paying down, you know, the appraisal debt and methodology debt. But you have those people doing that job and not the higher level of job of training people, ensuring methodology and those things. So, we can't.
So, what you're saying is you're not hiring because you're not training?
Because we don't have the capacity to.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
It's a capacity issue.
All right. So, how are you going to hire someone else if you don't have the capacity to train now? I mean, my point is, is you've had this position open for a year. Hire the person. If they got to sit around for 30 days until the right time for the training, you've got the person there. But you're not hiring, and you're asking for more positions which have to be tax-levered. And what you're saying is, we don't have the bandwidth to train. That's why we're not hiring. But the reality is that you're just not hiring. Okay?
No, no, we are hiring.
Well, then, why haven't you filled this position?
That position is a position number. We have filled bodies in other vacant positions. The mistake we've made, if you want to call it that, is we didn't put a person in that specific position number. And so, it gives the false appearance that that position has been vacant for 200 and some odd days, which is not an accurate statement.
It's not that. It's that you have an open slot in your organization that has not been filled. You've got people coming and going, right? But you've never gotten yourself to full capacity, is what this is basically saying. So, why do you think it's so hard to hire somebody?
Well, part of it's the, the hiring pool, finding a right fit and the candidate that we feel comfortable making.
Have you gotten applications for the job?
We do, yes.
Okay. Have you interviewed people for the job?
Yes.
Okay. And have you extended offers for the job?
Yes.
And what happens after that?
Well, we fill those positions, but again, that's, you know, they went into the other position numbers.
I just want to interject, position numbers don't really have anything to do with it. I had a phone call with Tyson earlier to explain this. Regardless of what position number, the fact remains, there is not, they are not fully staffed. There is an open appraiser position. It's, position number is just a shell game. There's still an open position. And I did pull up the five-year trend for the overtime in the appraisal budget. In 2021, it was 7,000. In '22, it was 60,000. In '23, it was 30,000. In '24, it was 4,200. So far, in 2025, it's 5,900. And so, I just, that is definitely significantly less than the cost of a full-time employee.
Oh, yeah.
And I also wanted to ask, I know that the assessor is working on their priority list. Do you have any idea, is the COLA a higher priority than these FTE requests or not? Because I haven't received a priority list yet, so I wanted to ask.
So, again, I'm going to refer the board to the statute.
Can you just answer the question, please?
It's all a priority. We, we need the FTEs and we need the COLA. We need to pay people right, or we end up losing them. It's an issue that the sheriff office faces. We faced it. So, they're, they're all requirements.
I guess the problem here is that you don't, you've never gotten to full capacity. And so, adding more positions while you're not getting to full capacity just means we're taxing for revenue that isn't going to be used for a position. And that comes at the expense of the county as a whole.
No, I understand that.
So, you know, if you've had this, in essence, an open position for over a year, I'm not seeing anything that's, it's not that I don't, look, your presentation was great, okay? You made a very compelling argument, but now, we're talking about the reality of the situation. You can't get to full capacity. So, adding more people isn't going to change that if you can't articulate why you're not getting to full capacity.
Well, what we've had in the past is, is we missed the window of opportunity to hire. And, and then, well, I'm just telling you what happened. And then, the hiring was placed on the back burner. I agree. That should not have happened. That shouldn't happen. Going forward, my commitment is to not allow that to happen. We're, I agree with you. We need to just bring the people on board, even if they're not quite doing the, the on-the-job training that we would like them to do. But we've got to bring them on the board and we can still provide the training as is. We, we've got to stop doing what we've done in the past. I agree with that.
Is your residential appraiser tech, is that a filled position or is that an open position?
That, that's an open position.
So, technically, you would have two open positions in residential appraiser if we do the conversion.
Yes. Three, plus the one they have right now. So, you would approve, they're asking for two new residential people right now. One is a conversion, one is a new position, plus the open one they have right now.
Yeah.
So, if you approve the two requests, they would have three vacant residential appraiser 1s.
I would say, fill the ones you got and then come back.
For me, your request?
Yeah. I mean, you, you do your conversion. You've got an open one. When you're at full capacity, then, you know, to me, it makes sense to talk about, you know, increasing the overhead. And, and I agree with you that there, you have a very compelling case. But we're at a point now where every dollar we assign to you is at the expense of other parts of the county. And if you have not demonstrated the capacity, demonstrated the capacity, not that you aren't going to change from today, today moving forward, then I'm less likely to say, here's more positions in your department.
Well, Commissioner, one other thing that I wanted to say, which I haven't said yet, is to grant our request, I would make a recommendation that we fund those positions from fund balance for, for fiscal year '25.
I just want to interject from a financial perspective. We do not pay for ongoing costs from our savings account.
Yeah.
But though, I ask that under the, on the point that we did levy for those in the prior year. So, and I agree with you, it makes no sense to levy and, and not actually hire and do something with that money. So, it was on that point.
Yeah, it doesn't work going forward. So, then, I would recommend we cut position line 4A and we approve line 40A.
You want to approve line 40A, the conversion?
Well, if that's the case, I mean, if they're saying that they're not going to fill the residential appraisal tech and then that way, that would give them the open, current open position, and that gives them one conversion.
That'll give you, that'll give you two.
Two open positions.
That'll give you two open spots in your residential appraiser.
It'd also be a much cheaper way for us to get an additional appraiser on board in terms of budgetary capacity.
Yeah.
All right. So, is it generally agreed to leave line 40A in the request to convert a residential appraisal tech to an appraiser 1 and then to cut line 4A, which is the request for a brand-new appraiser?
You good with that, Mark?
We can do that.
And Commissioners, do I understand correctly, what you're saying is, so you're granting essentially two appraiser positions now. I think previously, we had also a commercial income approach appraiser. That's retained as well as that. I think previously, we had also a commercial income approach appraiser. That's retained as well, is that correct?
Well, we haven't talked about that. We're just talking about the residential one and the fact that there was an open position in your office.
But then are you asking that we then come back mid-year to make our requests for these?
Well, what I'm asking is, fill up to capacity and then let's have that conversation. You might have one or two people resign in the next year, right? Well, you're always gonna have this open spot. We don't, we can't predict the future like that. You know, you just have the normal turnover. So seeing you get to capacity makes it a lot easier to say, okay, we can talk about allocating money. I mean, I think
Well, and if you get all of these positions to appraiser threes that you're wanting to convert from twos to threes, then that automatically expands the capacity 'cause you've told me that they can do more work than a one.
They, 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 they don't need to be supervised like a one needs to be supervised.
Yeah.
Essentially, a one is, I don't want this to sound bad, but a one is more of a burden than a help.
Oh, that sounds terrible.
Yeah.
I'm just, look, I understand. It, it just, it requires less oversight, less additional questions, all those kinds of things. They should be more efficient. They should be able to have higher productivity. And seeing those numbers, uh, if that ever comes to light, would be kinda neat to look at, uh, from a productivity standpoint. How, how much does it help your appraisal, appraiser for each addition, additional appraiser that comes on board? What, what does it reduce it from if you're at like, just under thirty-five-hundred, uh, properties, uh, per appraiser? If you add another person, you get to capacity. Does that bring it down a little bit? You know, thirty-three, thirty-two-hundred, something like that?
I think right now, it'd be like a hundred.
Turn the microphone on.
I think right now, it'd be like a hundred and fifty drop in, in load, or something, some, somewhere around there. Um, 'cause we were trying to get to, you know, mid-twenty-eight-hundred. Um, so, you know, five, you're, you're about in that ballpark.
So you add two more, you're dropping it from, basically to thirty-two-hundred. So you're getting a lot closer.
Yeah, and that, and that should additionally help in the overtime. I wanted to ask the, the board while we're up here. Um, you guys had a question about, um, the, the BIA position as well. Um, do you want us to come back? I can speak on that now.
Because you asked us to present information. We do have information that we can present.
Yeah.
How, how long do you think you'll need?
Uh, for the, for the BA, the BA is very quick, I think, to, to the point to make to the board.
Five minutes, ten minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Depending if the board has questions.
Is that okay? Leslie?
Yes.
Alright, let's do it.
Okay, so the, the BIA, yeah, would you grab that? So we broke out that overtime hour. The reason that we're asking for the third BIA is really to reflect, um, the skills of somebody that we have and retain them. So we have somebody that's brought Python programming to the department, to the data and development team, and is helping to, to roll that out and expand that in terms of automation, which has had a pretty significant effect.
Sorry, Commissioners, I'm gonna interject. The assessor wants me to unplug my computer and plug in his PowerPoint. Do you need to go through the PowerPoint? But Dyson, are you just gonna present verbally? What happened?
Just afraid if we unplug it, we might have technical difficulties.
Okay.
Sorry, we're a little fragile on that stuff.
I think that's what Dyson was suggesting you present.
He said two minutes.
I'm just gonna cover this position really quickly.
Just go ahead and cover it.
And I'll send you the visualization later, but essentially, the BIA's have allowed us to reduce the overtime from the comptroller position that it was, the BIA position, over the last few years down to zero. And it was almost half of that big spike in twenty twenty-two. So it's kind of a combination of BIA and comptroller in twenty-four or twenty-three, and then it was all BIA. And then it stepped down. So, um, like, it shows kind of, uh, a decrease in that workload and having to overwork and not having to hire additional appraisers, but, or BIAs. Um, I would say for this specific position, it's really about this person and maintaining a, a great technical capacity brought onto our team and has had reaching benefits to, um, the rest of the data and development team. And we'd like to retain that person. They bring skill sets that are far above what we're paying them currently.
So this is a filled position?
Yes.
It's thirty-one A conversion for eighty-five-hundred.
What are your other thoughts?
Uh, which is more important, the BIA conversion or the, um, residential three to a four lead position?
I would say probably the BIA. If you, you're, you're, you know, we have to prioritize it. Both of them have their own strengths in the organization and both are very important, especially the career progression for the four. But, you know, having the depth of field in the BIA position and maintaining that institutional knowledge that we're training them on is, is huge. But both are extremely important. I don't wanna dilute, but having an additional lead would mean.
Is the BIA gonna, um, uh, really reduce or increase productivity among the rest of the staff?
Yes, they're rolling out tools to help with automation and giving those tools to the, the rest of the division. It has ramifications for the whole.
And then the only other thing is, I just wanna make sure, 'cause, you know, when you do more of this programmatic stuff, you start to have edge cases that get overlooked. Uh, do you have systems in place to help catch those edge cases before, uh, you know, a role gets pushed out or anything like that?
Yeah, being able to roll out Simpatico will help us a lot with that. Being able to leverage, leverage all of the state's reporting to help catch those edge cases will help us immensely as we work, as we work through that.
Okay. Well, I'm okay with it.
Commissioners, I just wanted to remind you that the assessor did not provide a prioritized list of asks, whereas other elected officials did.
Yeah.
So it could be helpful to circle back to these at our next budget meeting on Friday, after the assessor has provided a prioritized list. For example, the sheriff's office did prioritize their A-budget requests.
Sounds good. Anything else? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staying in the top section of requests for new positions, we'll circle back to the assessor this Friday after we receive their priority list. Um, the other main ones that I wanted to talk about were the sheriff's requests down below in yellow. Small on the screen, but you have it printed in front of you. These were the ones that we hadn't really yet discussed in a meeting with the board. The sheriff's office went back and prioritized asks from most important to least important. Specifically, um, they are requesting to approve the request for two new deputies, but to freeze them and not fund them. Um, and so I didn't know if the sheriff's office wanted to speak to that, or, but I wanted the board to, uh, discuss that, since those are the two lowest priority on their list.
I guess, what would be the benefit of approving the positions and then freezing them?
From my perspective, just in the aspects of my job duties, there is no benefits, but I'm sure that the sheriff's office has a reason for wanting it done that way.
Well, we would like the board to know that our deputies that are out in the field are experiencing calls for service that have to do with mentally ill people constantly. Our mentally ill calls for service have gone up significantly since we added people and we handle them differently. Just as I was parking my car, today, we have another suicide threat going on as we speak. So, this county's problems isn't getting any smaller. Growth is driving what calls for service the sheriff's office has. So that's, that's the benefit to letting you and future commissioners know that, hey, this unfortunately is a growing community and we have the same problems that, that mental health crisis that are occurring in the community or occurring in our jail. So, yeah, we're, uh, we're stretched. This, these last couple of weeks, it's not the significant events that drain us because we don't have the resources to be able to handle those significant events. But it's the suicides. It's people showing up in the emergency room with a gunshot wound in the back. It is several high-profile missing reports that, missing persons that we have to do follow-up on each, each single one of them. So, we're, we're, we're one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States. And our sheriff's office needs to grow commensurate with the growth in this county.
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I, I guess I'd be in favor of, even though it's, doesn't not really matter one way or the other, of approving the two patrol deputies but freezing them. And, um, my main reason is because we did have two SRO positions that were just converted. They were not added. And I don't know, I still haven't gotten to the bottom of that, where that mistake happened.
What do you mean by converted?
So, we, as the board, approved an SRO and they never backfilled the position. There, there was never another position number entered. There was, however it became a conversion, it was not as a new. And I know that, uh, I don't know if it was this board, but definitely the last board approved a new body because they were funded seventy-thirty. So for thirty percent, Cootney County got another deputy, you know, in our highest call time areas of the, of the
From my understanding, we're pulling them off of the street to make them SROs, which seems counterintuitive in a growing community when we need more patrol.
Right, and that was a mistake twice.
And so
So I, I haven't gotten to the bottom of where that
And I, and the other thing too, and, and look, you were in the room when I said this. Show the numbers. Show the numbers. You're telling us it's a growing community. You're telling us all these things are happening. It's, it's not, I'm sorry, Sheriff, I was in the middle of speaking. And we see nothing, you know, just being told, you, we need more, we need more, we need more. And, you know, the part that I don't understand is why are we pulling people off the street for SRO positions? If we have a certain number we're supposed to have for patrol, we have a certain, a type of a service level we wanna try to achieve. And without understanding that, it's a constant ask for more and more people. But what are these people gonna get? Like, you know, let's say if we add two people, what does that mean for calls for service? And why two? Why'd you arrive at two and not four or six to address these issues?
Well, two are the replacements for the people that we took off the street for a majority of the time to be SROs. But if you don't wanna have SROs, then we need more patrol deputies because, a lot more. Because those calls for service at those schools are only getting worse. So they save deputies from working the field to go to those schools.
Well, I understand, but, you know, it's all anecdotal is what I'm getting at, you know? And the point is, is that how many SROs do you wanna have in the sheriff's office? You know, how much are we, is this gonna cost? We, you know, we keep getting asked for more people, but we don't understand what you're gonna get, what do we get with these people? And again, my question is, if two is good, why not four or six? What do we get with six that we don't get, that we, that we're, you know, with two?
We're only asking, we did originally ask for six. We have now said, well, let's get the two back that we converted to SROs. But originally, the ask was six. So we're just asking to put a placeholder for two because this is a growing community. These SROs, they handle calls for service that if they weren't at those schools, that we would need more patrol deputies to handle those calls for service. And, and quite honestly, it's not gonna get any better. It's not gonna get any better.
Well, I mean, if you guys wanna make a decision on the anecdotal, uh, stories on this, then, you know, I think that's fine.
What's not anecdotal is the fact that they had two SROs approved and they weren't backfilled. They were converted. So again, I'm still doing that investigation, um, to figure out how that happened. But I would ask, ask that these be frozen, so they wouldn't be
Well, and I think the other side to this too is that we're not really looking at the true cost of the SRO program. You know, the cars, the training, all those kinds of things. And I'm not averse to the SR, uh, program, but how much do we, do we wanna allocate in our budget for this program compared to other components of it? That's a discussion we've never really had.
Right, and again, it's a shared service. So as these different entities are able to pay some, if not all, then it helps the community in general. Because again, there's something that we can use, uh, part of the year, after hours, all this stuff that they're not actually at school.
Well, they're working full-time, so the only time they're really actually gonna be able to do the work, I presume, is in the summertime when school's out.
Well, and overtime.
Yeah. Commissioner, I'm blind. Good. So, put them on and then don't fund them, freeze them. There you go.
Alright, sounds like two commissioners agree. I'll make the change to take away the funding and the onboarding costs for both of these deputies. Next, in order of lowest priority on the sheriff's list, is the two senior maintenance positions. Both of them for a loaded cost of eighty-six thousand dollars.
I think we need to keep at least one, if at all possible. They've just had way too many, um, facilities where they could use two. But they've had facilities increases, so it, it just means that you're paying out of one. So we'll get more contractors to come in and do the work if we don't have our own FTE.
I had a PowerPoint from the last presentation we need to get to, uh, to, but this is a print-off of what I put together.
Did you wanna run through it real quick?
Sure, yeah. Um, a brief overlay of our staff. We've got, uh, one facilities manager, um, five senior maintenance operators, one which is still in training. We finally filled that position after about two years. And one grounds operator, and that's all he does. Um, on average, you try, try to have at fifteen or less pending work orders. We're currently around the eighty a day. Ninety percent of those are jail-related, so a lot of that takes coordination. The next page is a sample of our monthly report that you guys receive every month, as well as this sheriff's staff. It goes over the new work orders that we received, um, the completed work orders, and then the pending work orders. And at this time, we were fairly low, but we're finding we're in the eighty to ninety work orders pending. The new building didn't help much either. So we're much a reactive department and we have been for years. I like to be proactive, but at least I'd like to be standard if we can. Um, and that's where these two positions I'm asking for. Ultimately, we should have eight. Um, we're doing a lot of tra- excuse me, travel time between all of the facilities. And it takes twenty to twenty-five minutes just to get north from our base. So, listed, listed below is a, a few of the projects for that month that we did. In addition to the work orders, um, evidence, which is actually, good news, is coming to an end here in the next probably few weeks. We should have that done up north. We're working on the jail generator replacement, um, jail HVAC replacement. We added some blinds that were projected in the budget for north. The admin building, there was a lot of variables that popped up with the different moves that we ended up having to take it, take on. A lot of departments moved within the jail and the sheriff's office when it was, uh, when they moved. GL Pods is in progress and, and then a lot of rekeying for the different departments. As far as training goes, um, we're all, um, cross-trained in multiple disciplines. Plumbing, electrical, low voltage, electronics, carpentry, locks. We're all certified locksmiths. Not necessarily licensed, but certified, so we can break those down and repair them. We've done that for other departments as well. So we do a lot of, um, other departments outsource our department to take care of a lot of their issues. In fact, I found out this yesterday that we're going to be responsible for the bottom floor of the new justice building because it's transport and it's a lot of, uh, correctional equipment. We do a lot of computer hardware and software installs and repairs, um, HVAC equipment, logic controllers, metal fabrication. Uh, we do a lot of that for other departments as well. Um, we've done it for building and grounds, um, trans, uh, transit department. And we try to maintain a Level One and Two BOC, which is the Building Operator's Certification. That's a course that, it's a forty-hour course that we take, um, so that we are familiar with how buildings operate. We try to train yearly. Um, we haven't done that in the last couple of years. Our budget was cut by me and by the director, the previous director, on the building grounds. So I've got that included in this year's budget. Here's some of the responsibilities in just the buildings. Um, the jail, uh, jail admin training building, uh, IT building, the maintenance shop. The jail, jail admin, training building, IT building, the maintenance shop, the evidence annex. And this is all on the jail campus, or the south campus I'm calling it. The jail annex, and then approximately five acres of grounds. The sheriff's north campus, which is the sheriff's office, admin, patrol, records, civil, detectives, marine, auto shop, and evidence. And there's approximately ten acres of grounds there. Search and rescue, office of emergency management, nine-one-one center. And then the boathouses, both at Blackwell Island and Templins. Templins, we really haven't had to do much with, that's a newer boathouse. But we're hoping with the new boathouse, we'll no longer be responsible for Blackwell Island. Combined, our department is responsible for over two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand square foot of building space spread out at multiple campuses. Within Cootney County, these buildings generally operate on a twenty-four-seven basis. Add in the travel time between facilities, and our daily schedule fills up quickly, and we struggle to meet the most basic demands. Here's some goals I've set, I've tried to keep these since I've been a facilities director or manager for almost ten years. Even with the department about twenty-eight. All those, these goals will not immediately correct the problem. By approving the two requested positions, it will get us closer to the goal. Adding staff will allow us to continue providing the highest level of quality, efficiency, and standard operations without compromising our obligation to statutes and policies, which unlike your standard building and grounds, we have the jail standards we have to adhere to, as well as some statutes that involve correctional, as well as commercial buildings. Prior to adding KCSO North Campus, our department has requested additional staffing going far as back as twenty-eighteen. A few years back, a position was approved, and we just recently filled that one. Unfortunately, we will be losing another employee to retirement in September, and we'll need to advertise for that as well. Any questions?
Just a comment, that the seven of you essentially are responsible for thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet each.
I'm just curious, you said it will get us closer to that goal, the two requested positions. What is your goal?
My ultimate goal is to have eight people under me, and then station them at certain locations. Four at the jail and at jail campus, two up north that will do the SAR building, the OEM building, and then north, and then a couple floaters to do fabrication and that kind of stuff.
Are you behind right now on your workload?
We're, we're.
What's your turnaround at this point?
As far as staffing?
No, just on your workload, I mean, when something comes in.
For every one to two work orders, we get seven or eight coming in.
So you're not actually completing a lot of them?
No, our PMs are nonexistent, which is our primary.
What is PM, sorry?
Competitive maintenance.
Okay.
To go in there. The staff over the years has been extremely well, or done extremely well with that. A lot of our equipment is thirty-plus years old, and that's unheard of in the, especially with HVAC. HVAC is fifteen to twenty years. So we've far extended all the, all the equipment that we have, but yeah, we're falling way behind. Like I said, it's more reactive. I don't expect us to be proactive, it would be nice, but at least trying to keep up with what we're doing. And, and we seem to be, not that it's a bad thing, but the, the go-to department for other departments, including building and grounds.
So if you got the two positions, that would largely cover the Cootney North?
Yeah, yeah.
And keep everything else pretty much as is?
Right.
Thoughts? Sounds good to me. Keep the two?
Sure, but if you go any further up the list, then the two are what they've said are less of a priority. But it's, there's only so much you can do with so many people.
Oh, I agree. And, and, you know, we haven't even talked about the COLA, I mean, where people are with that.
Can I add to that?
The COLA?
Yeah.
Sure.
We've got one, and possibly several in the next couple of years that are going to reach the max step. And so if they don't get a COLA, they don't get anything.
Well, what kind of?
I understand that the hands are tied, but, you know, you're talking loyal employees have been in for fifteen, twenty, twenty-eight years that are, are putting in the blood, blood and the sweat.
What kind of a COLA would you propose?
Well, there's been times we've gotten zero and we've gotten a penny, so anything is, is better than nothing.
So like point one percent?
I don't want to add numbers, but something to say, great job, you guys are killing it.
Well, yeah, if we did a one percent COLA, we would be looking at, what, about six hundred plus, six fifty? In the red with the three percent? Countywide? Yeah. It's at one percent. I mean, it's just, there's a limitation here. That's why last time we were in the budget meeting, I asked, you know, get, tell us what is most important. If you want the COLA first, then there's just not enough for the other items.
And, and we understand that, we've been in that position multiple times in the past, so.
I mean, it's too.
The guys are good about that, but, you know.
And, and that's why we ask for the priority of, of what you're looking for. So if the COLA is the issue, then everything else needs to just start getting cut.
So it's just a balancing act between, we had a department here a few years ago who said, we do not want raises. I mean, they love raises, but they, we don't, we have to have another body. They're drowning, they could not survive unless they had another body. So that, you know, and we were able to fund that position for that department. So for me, I mean, I'd love to fund both of them, but if we can't, then I would say at least start with one that gives you some relief. And then just trying to drive towards that COLA at this point.
With the understanding that we'll all be asking in the future.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
I think the big challenge is that this year, we only got, what, two percent on new construction?
I, I think that the challenge.
Some amount that we talked about before, on new construction this year?
We got one point three million.
One point three million, actually, it's pretty decent.
Okay.
So I.
So then we just don't have the.
But the jail medical went up, what, one point three million? So we basically gulfed up most of our tax increase just with the jail.
Plus the health insurance went up, another million.
Which we're going to be discussing tomorrow.
Sheriff?
Hi, Robert Norris, Sheriff. Just curious, would the county maintenance, would they need more people to take over Cootney North? Or could they absorb Cootney North without any more people?
They, they actually need a half-time person to even deal with our campus here. So a half-time person would be able to sustain downtown campus, the courthouses, admin. I think post-falls, motor vehicle license, driver's license and that. So, no. Now, I, I would say that obviously work with Jeff, and if, if there's a lull down here and that you can, you know, borrow at a time, because I know Tom, you, you, your two departments have worked so close together. Hey, we have this, we need this help, you need this help, and you've gone back and forth. But, yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable cutting both. I'd like to keep both, but at this point, we're quite far away from where we want to be.
All right, so cut one of the maintenance positions and leave one of them in for now, is that?
That works.
Work for now, okay. We can always come back and change that. Next on the priority list is the sex offender registration specialist, which is line twenty-two A. That's the next highest priority. And we haven't really talked about that one yet. And so I believe that with, there's only one sex offender registration person at the jail right now, and this would be adding a second person.
Captain Hile?
Yes, commissioners, currently we have one employee covering this position. And much like many other things in the county, it's statutorily required. The problem is, this doesn't account for, with the one position, it doesn't account for vacation, sick days, as well as training to keep up on the tasks. I don't have any charts or graphs, but there are three-hundred-and-thirty-four sex offenders, sex offenders registered in Cootney County. And they are required to come in and register every time they make a change, address, vehicle, job, or if they're a new registrant. And on average, the workload per sex offender for the specialist to do the work is an hour and a half. And they're averaging six sex offenders a day. And that's a total of nine hours of work a day, just dealing with the sex offender, not any of the admin work that goes along with it. And we can't get behind on that, obviously, because of the statutes that require, require us to keep up on the database. So this is a need that's been there for a long time. Without this, we've had other employees in the county, or in the sheriff's office rather, working out of their job descriptions, out of their job description to help cover when illnesses, vacations, trainings happen. And that dips the level of service that they can provide, because they're only doing it a fraction of the time. And with the databases that they use, it's hard to keep up on if you don't use it regularly. And with all of this, we are the highest compliance in the state with sex offenders, to keep the streets safe, obviously. So we're just looking for somebody to, the second person to help keep up on this.
Would a half-time person bring any relief?
Anything would be better than nothing. And like when the opening, we had an opening a couple of months ago, we had eleven people apply for it, and many of them were qualified. Full-time would be the best, but a half-time person would be better than nothing to start.
If that works? Let's go to halftime.
All right, so it sounds like it's agreed to approve that half-time. I'll circle back to some more of these requests in the top section at our next meeting. I want to jump down to line seventy-three A through seventy-five A. Those are the prosecutor's personnel requests. So in the prosecutor's list of priorities, the number one priority is the COLA. Number two priority is to keep the temporary and part-time victim witness coordinator and the investigator, which the board has tentatively approved so far. And then the number three priority is the career progression for the attorneys. So for line seventy-three A, this is a request to regrade an attorney from an ATP two to an ATP three, and to give them an additional step. And then line seventy-five A, similar, is to regrade the employee and give them two additional steps. And so the main priority from the prosecutor is to get them regraded. And then secondarily after that is to also include the additional step increases. I do know last time we discussed these, there were questions from the board on why the additional step increases in addition to the regrades. But I didn't know if the prosecutor wanted to speak to that today.
Certainly, first I just want to point out that my requests are all using budget savings. Even prior to the budget deliberations, with the county being, and projectedly in the red, I, I went through my budget and I found ways to, to save money on freezing positions. I'm just trying to use a little bit of the money that we're saving to make these requests. The rest of the money comes back to the county in savings. As far as the increases in grade and step, it's within policy. When, when somebody's promoted, the department can give that person up to a fifteen percent raise. I don't know what the other departments are doing, but my attorneys have doctorate degrees, they handle a large amount of cases. I, I can't keep losing attorneys the way we have over the years. I am doing my best to keep the attorneys we have. And, and when, when I promote people, I promote them so that they are doing the work that's needed, and so that they'll stay. And it's what I've been doing the last two years. So this is consistent with what I've been doing for almost two years. If the board's not inclined to grant the grade and step request, I would at least ask for the grade increases. But again, I just want to remind the board that this, there's still budget savings with these asks. This is not causing the budget to go up.
I'm fine keeping these. I think if you wanted to get rid of those step requests, you would work with HR to make sure there's no FSLA problems, because it's been your practice. And I understand if your practice isn't funded, that is not a personal thing. But I'd just probably be more comfortable if you checked with them.
It's not that I want to do it, I'm, I'm saying if the board is inclined to cut anything, I would ask the board.
Right, but I need to know that question, I need to that question before I cut it. Because if, let's say in twenty-twenty-five, you had a thirty-eight-year-old male, and he got, he got to his second step, right, with the promotion? And then next year, you have a fifty-six-year-old female, and now she doesn't get that extra step. So that, that causes a problem. And so I just would want to know, because you obviously know who these people are, if there is any FSLA problems with that. And if there's not, then we can consider that as part of the cuts. With that, Brandy, I did get a list of about two million dollars in requests, cuts from the sheriff. Is that already reflected in our newest?
It is, included in that two million is all of the cuts that we have already made in previous meetings. So total cuts is two million, but the new cuts was what I read off at the beginning. So it was the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand for B budget, and then four-hundred thousand for A budget. So the, the two million number is not all new.
Sure, okay.
That includes stuff we've already cut before today, well, in prior meetings.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like you're still going to wait to hear back from the prosecutor on the step increases?
I'm good with your ATP three, but the steps, that's something that, it can't be subjective. You have to really be able to document the, that, like Commissioner Duncan said. Otherwise, it just opens the door for future problems.
Certainly.
Okay, so the next meeting is this Friday, so maybe by then, ask some more context. Those were the main personnel requests I wanted to touch on today, unless the board had other ones they wanted to circle back to. And then I'm going to move on to the CapEx summary really quick. There were some outstanding items there. Line nine C was the request from the assessor's office, an ADA request. And the board said that they were going to discuss that with the assessor in an executive session at an HR meeting to get more information. So, does the board have more information in order to make a decision on this?
That's never been done before us.
So this is the third time that I've asked in a budget meeting for this to become before the board in an executive session at an HR meeting, and it still hasn't happened. So I just need to know, I have statutory deadlines to get the budget balanced. So I mean, is there more information?
Go ahead, assessor, go back.
It's on.
Commissioners, part of the challenge is, we've been struggling trying to connect with HR. HR, as we all know, has been short-staffed. We just had a meeting with HR, I believe it was last week, where we got some information. What we need to do now is schedule a meeting with you to go over that, the executive session component of that.
So I would say, since it's a capital item, that we cut it now, and then after the executive session, if we find reason to bring it back, we do that.
That's fine, and I would like to see any kind of schematics you can include with this. I don't want it to just be, you know, we're going to do this, and move that, and change this, and.
We are simultaneously working on eliminating that entirely as an expense to try and come up with a different solution. We think we might have that, we, so that could be a possibility. If I remember correctly, the original request was twelve thousand dollars. We have worked to get that reduced to eight thou, about, well, eight thousand, five hundred dollars roughly. I think Jeff is here, he can speak to that. We've asked them to go back to get another budget, excuse me, another estimate.
Again, we, we'll just.
At the same time, we're trying to eliminate that altogether.
Yeah, well, all right, well, we'll eliminate it now, and then when we have that meeting, we'll make the final.
All right, seems like the board generally agrees to cut this request from the assessor, and we can bring it back or fund it at some point in the future when more information is brought forward. The other capital outstanding item that I had was the land purchase from search and rescue to purchase from the airport. Is there any updated information from the board on if you want to leave that in, or take it out and get a new appraisal done?
Gaston is trying to get that right now. He's going after, and he's hoping they don't have to do an entire new appraisal, that he can, they can just do an update to say, yes, that's still within range. So, yeah, I, I still want to leave it in, because it's not going to get any cheaper, and, you know, I think it's needed space.
I mean, we're planning on using a lot of interest for capital expenses, so.
Yeah, exactly. So there is one thing I wanted to bring up, so I've been. So I've been thinking a lot about it along with the, our recent jail inspection and all that. And if it is the board's wish, I would ask that we bring back the vacuum sealer. I think that it will prevent handling it twice. They handle the inmates' property twice. And so I would just at least like to bring that back. They said they can wait on the conveyor, but I think the vacuum sealer would be very helpful right now.
I'm fine. Look, any of these kind of expenses, if we have the interest income to make that purchase, I am fine doing that. There's no issue.
Right.
It's really just the continued overhead year over year.
Correct.
Because we've got these steps, we've got COLAs, we've got all these things that just gobble up next year's money, and we just have to be very careful with that.
Yeah. And, and I think there's a couple of things in here too that, like two wheelchairs, I mean, we don't need to put those in every single year, so I don't know why that couldn't be interest income, right?
The, they're, are you talking about the sheriff's cuts?
Yeah.
Yeah, they cut those from their budget. So that, those are ongoing costs in their B budget, and so those would be covered by tax and interest income.
Right, so that, so that's what I'm saying is they don't need two wheelchairs next year, so why not put it in the interest income that we can spend and?
It is being put to interest income right now.
Okay, because I think I have it as a cut.
Well, you, they, they cut it to reduce, because it's in B budget, so it's considered an ongoing cost.
Right.
So they cut it to reduce our budget deficit.
Yeah. But I don't think that helped.
Huh?
I don't think that helped, right?
I mean, we're, it's definitely not enough for a COLA.
Right.
We're still very far away.
Yeah. I mean, it's those things like that, that, I mean, they're needed. So see, things that are one-time expense that are needed, I think we really should be looking at putting it towards the $2 million or $3 million. I don't even know how much it is anymore.
3.5.
The one.
3.5.
3.5?
Well, what is it, three?
Oh, you're, no, I think you're right, 3.5.
Yeah, because we lowered.
You're using currently for interest, you're using 2.34 million for ongoing costs.
Yeah.
Right.
We're getting closer. We're doing a lot better than we were a week ago.
Okay.
For ongoing costs there for the interest.
All right.
And what does a wheelchair cost?
Less than a thousand bucks each.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's nothing, so.
So those are the major things that I wanted to cover today. Before our next meeting on Friday, I do want to bring to the board's attention. So I didn't receive any prioritized budget lists from any of the board's departments except for AMP. So in the spirit of holding all of the electeds to the same standard, I would really appreciate if your departments before this Friday would send me their prioritized budget lists, just like everybody else. And then I'm going to continue reaching out to some specific departments on making B budget cuts that I think they should make based on historic spending trend. And if they refuse to make the cut, then I will bring it to your attention in the meeting this Friday.
Okay.
And then you can make the ultimate decision, because if they refuse to cut it, then it's up to you if you're going to allow them to have that in their budget or not.
Right. And did you want me to bring up the tasers real quick?
Sure.
Because I think we can do the interest income for the tasers, because I believe we can get a upfront contract and it, it's not over years. It'd be like, you're buying this many tasers this year, here you go.
So my understanding is that it's the exact same type of contract.
Correct, but they might be able to do something different for AMP.
If it's a different type of contract, then I just need to review it.
Yeah.
Because my staff reviewed what they had budgeted.
Correct.
And that, we just, we cannot appropriate more than one year.
No, I understand that. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we're, we're going to take it from a five-year contract to upfront purchase and get rid of the five-year.
Lump sum purchase.
Lump sum purchase instead of five-year.
For their tasers.
Yeah. But again, I'm, I'm waiting to make sure that they are willing to work with us and what they're, so as soon as I get that, I'll let you know.
There's no ongoing expense for the software portion.
Correct.
That would be interesting, because I think it's the same company that the sheriff uses, but.
It is, but again, it's so much less than what the sheriff has. It's, you know, so.
All right.
Just trying to work with the board.
If the board, if departments can do this too, as you said, they can run these reports to look at their 23 actuals, 24 actuals, 25 actuals, adopted 25 and what they're requesting for 2026. So that's their operating B budget to see what they've actually spent. And then if they can make cuts based on what they think they're going to spend in 2026, again, a lot of times people just plug in numbers, because that's what they've always used on line items in previous years, then they can send those cuts to Brandy, right? That gets us closer to our goal if people really are trying to prioritize that COLA. That would be great if every elected official sends a priority list to Brandy and the board and then looks at all the org sets, their operational budgets, what they've spent over the last few years, actuals, and then what they're actually budgeting for 2026 by line item, okay?
Okay.
Yep. And just as an FYI, we kind of just discussed a little bit on rough numbers. I mean, we could probably find $300,000 to $500,000 in our B budget if, if we made the requests reflective of historical numbers.
If the electeds agree with my proposed cuts to their budgets, correct?
Well, not only that, I'm hoping Alliant has some good news for us tomorrow.
And that's another thing too, that hasn't really been discussed, and that is, you know, the contributions for health insurance.
Yeah.
You know, that hasn't gone up since, what, 2020, 2021, roughly?
I thought we did it last year.
Well, but that, that's for individual.
Oh, independent.
For dependents, it went up.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we didn't touch the employee only, but last year we did increase it for families.
Yeah. So I, I think that'd be my last place, like if we're still whatever short, that'd be my last place to look for it, but that's.
Well, the problem is that it's with the COLA. I mean, you know.
No, I understand, but then again, it just, all right, you're paying more for hair and you're paying more and, you know, does it work? So I, I'm just saying, I'll look at it. It's just the last thing I want to look at. Can we nail down a COLA number? I mean, are we going to put a?
Well, I haven't received direction, like on a certain percentage that the board or wants to see. I mean, so I would love to hear if there's a percentage that you would like me to.
We can do a range, like we presented a range for you guys last year, different amounts, and then you guys can, based on the percentage of tax increase, you guys want to take or not take. But we can do that proposal, you know, one, one and a half, two, two and a half.
So yes, I just need, like I said, I just need board direction.
I, I think I'd like to see the range, one and a half to two and a half.
That's one, that's just under 1.1 million up to 1.8 million.
Two and a half is 1.8 million?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I have.
So that's why, I mean, the, the amount of cuts to get a COLA.
I know.
Are going to be extraordinary.
I want to emphasize again that it might not be possible to do a 2.5% COLA, not because people are being wasteful, but because the cost to actually do our jobs has just gone up and we don't have the tax revenue and other revenues to cover the cost of doing our jobs plus the COLA. And by that, I mean the cost to provide medical care to inmates has astronomically gone up. That contract the jail has, that ate up our entire new construction tax increase.
Yeah.
So that, that right there took up all the tax authority for the most of the county. But that's not, that's nothing like that anyone has done wrong. That's just the cost of doing business.
Same thing with the health insurance.
If we can't get to the 2.5%, you know, we're going to cut people's budgets, but you can't, you have to leave enough for people to do their job. Does that make sense? I just want you to know, like, we have a new courthouse, we have this new KC North facility, our utility bills have gone way up, our janitorial expenses have gone way up. We have given new pay increases over the years and we are filling vacant positions and we're feeling the effects of that. And so we can do everything we possibly can and we still might not get to a 2.5% COLA. Not for lack of trying, but just because the cost of operating the county has gone up.
And then our employer health and benefits increase is going up. We'll see tomorrow with Alliant Presents, 967,000, almost a million dollars this year, so to take that into consideration too.
Well, and we added expense with the PMR clinic too. And, you know, and that's going to take time for any savings to be realized. So there's been a lot that's been added in the past couple of years.
With the one quarter we've seen, we're on track, I think, for a million at this point.
Say it again?
Is it?
That's what, that's what they say.
Yeah.
But, but our health insurance has gone up a million, so it, it doesn't make any.
Everything does.
Any, any other questions up here, comments? I think that pretty much concludes it. We have a public comment, I believe. Come on down.
Ron Hartman for the record. I would like to see the employees get a COLA, but I don't think it needs to be at the expense of subsidizing city law enforcement. What I mean is Hayden, Hayden didn't pass a levy. Last time I got this information and quoted the law enforcement plus justice funds price per citizen, in Coeur d'Alene, price per citizen is $611.49.